I'll ask the clerk to take the roll.
Trustee Cawthon.
Here.
Klein.
Here.
President Larson.
Here.
Colleen O'Brien Bergland.
Here.
Thomas.
Here.
Whalen.
Here.
Mark Zappa. Absent.
Okay, Chair would entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the regular board meeting of October 2nd and the special board meeting of October 4th.
I move.
Yeah.
That we approve the minutes from the regular board meeting of October 2nd and the minutes of the special board meeting of October 4th, 2007.
Is there a second? Joe?
I'll second that.
Was there a second there? Jim?
Yeah, I just have one question. It was in the second paragraph of approval for the minutes, regular board meeting September 4th. Just confused here, down at the second to the last sentence or the last sentence. Second half of the motion should read, "Seconded by Cawthon, seconded by O'Brien Bergland." Is that correct?
Seconded by Cawthon was the correction.
Uh huh.
And then the, these approvals were seconded by Colleen.
Okay.
You know, it was confusing and I looked at it as to how, so.
That's fine. Just so it's, just so it's correct.
Yeah, it was the correction to the last minutes and then she seconded it.
Yeah, if you're telling me they're correct, then I believe you're correct.
Okay. Any other questions or corrections to the minutes? If not, all favor of the minutes as presented, signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is comments from the floor, which is the opportunity for people to, anyone who has any comments on items which are not a part of the agenda for tonight? Or some, some item that they'd like to make the board aware of, they are free to do so. Doug, do you have a couple of things you want to talk about?
Oh, I think I'm okay.
Alright. Alright, alright, seeing none, then we'll move on. Amendments to the DCCI Land Planners, Developers, and High Level Water Systems Agreement Regarding the Bridges, an item which has been on the agenda now for about three or four months. Finally, it looks like it has come to resolution. I didn't get a chance to ask you bill before the meeting, but I'm assuming you've seen this document?
Yes.
Okay, you're in concurrence with it?
I negotiated.
Okay, alright.
The attorney signed it.
Alright, are there any other, are there any questions with respect to, what is the basic nature of this? Basic understanding was at one point in time Derrick would build the building in which this equipment would be housed. We would put the guts of the equipment in it. Derrick is now going to put the guts of the equipment in it. The cost to put that in is about $250,000, round numbers. They're going to now pay that cost so the village doesn't have to. Why? Primarily because they want to accelerate the process. And also then, it eliminates the need for them to, that we would not charge those lots the $2,000 high pressure fee because Derrick is picking up that cost. So it's a really good deal for the village, okay? So I would make a motion to approve the amendment to the developers agreement and high level water system agreement. Consistent, consistent with the attached document with the one change, which is in the first sentence where it says, "This agreement is entered into this blank day of not October, but change that to November."
Well, that didn't be the sixth day of November. Wouldn't say it. Wouldn't execute if I didn't sign it too. And Derrick hasn't signed it too.
So the date will be whenever we both sign it?
Yeah.
Okay.
When the last signed.
I'm just looking for something like that in the bag. Okay? So I have a motion on the floor. Is there a second to that?
I'll second.
Okay, comments or questions?
One question I had is our discussion the other day. I thought that we were going to leave a $5,000 escrow in there.
Number six, go on the second page.
Did you, somehow I think I got an old copy because it still has one over there. The one that was emailed to me.
It shouldn't be there, maybe there's a problem. Look at number six on the second page.
Are they still, they're not still on there either, are they?
They're on the other documents.
The agreement that Larry is going to sign is different from the one that we have here. Because I'm reading number six here, it doesn't say anything about this.
I know, I thought you had, this is the actual one. I'll read the number six. There's an additional clause. "DCCI shall place in an escrow account the amount of $5,000 for costs of the village arising from this agreement for engineering and legal services. If the village's costs are less than $5,000, any surplus will be returned to DCCI. If the costs exceed $5,000, DCCI agrees to reimburse the village its said costs upon receipt of an invoice."
What I would like to do is just take a recess for about three minutes and just have the clerk run off copies for the board, just to make sure we all have the same correct document. Additional, I guess we'd have to call it an addition. With that now a part amendment, it is otherwise identical. We made the one change at the top, just changing from October to November. So my motion would stay the same and I'm assuming the second would stay the same. Since this is an agreement, any other questions regarding this? If not, then we'll do a roll call vote on this. Start over here, Joe?
Yeah.
Colleen?
Yes.
Larry, yes, George?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And Mark absent, okay? Plan Commission Recommendations, there are no Plan Commission Recommendations for the board to consider. I don't see anyone here from the Plan Commission, so there won't be any updates, so we'll skip that item on the agenda completely. Move on to Finance. Claims, as you may have noticed, in the claims are fairly large for the month of October. Of 170,000. Of that, 131,000 is related to the, you know, village paying its portion of the village hall. So that's the primary reason. Other numbers are pretty respective. The Finance Committee recommends approval of the non-reoccurring claims in the amount of 170,923 and 4 cents. So is there a second to my motion?
Second.
Questions regarding the claims? Seeing done, we'll do a roll call vote, start on this side. Sandra?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Colleen?
Yes.
Larry, yes, okay? Review of the Street Reconstruction Project Loan Bids, Discussion and Approval Requested. It was the recommendation of the Finance Committee to accept the bid from Citizen State Bank. There was a bank which had a lower interest rate, but their loan also did not comply with our request, which was for no prepayment penalties. So even though their interest rate was lower, that other provision precluded them. So it is the recommendation of the Finance Committee to accept, just want to flip. To accept the bid from Citizen State Bank?
Let me read it.
Yes.
I move to accept the loan bid from Citizen State Bank in the amount of 131,468 dollars and no cents with a rate of 4.544 percent over a five-year repayment period with semi-annual payments beginning in 2008 and no prepayment penalties.
Okay. Now, I'll take that as a motion if that's okay, George, and I'll take the second.
I would second that.
You'll second that, alright, that's fine. Questions regarding that? Still does kind of amaze me that you can, that a municipality can borrow money at four or something.
Cheap, yeah.
Well, they're pretty sure we'll pay it back.
Well, that's probably true. It's, it's still just a rate that's so long. Alright, let's see, I think again, it's a financial one, so we'll do another roll call vote. Start on the other side this time. Joe?
Joe?
Colleen?
Yes.
Sandra?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
George? Yes.
Larry, yes, okay? 2007 budget year-to-date actual, 2008 preliminary. The only comment I'll make regarding 2007 budget year-to-date, because we're not going to take excessive, is we will obviously be amending our 2007 budget because we, as a village, elected to do the Village Hall edition, which was not per se in the budget, the residents did. So we'll need to modify our budget to reflect that, as well as some other changes. So we'll be dealing with that in December, the amended. I think we should be able to do that in December. The 2008 budget information has been submitted to the Star Observer. It will be published next week in the paper on Thursday. And then we will be planning to do the public hearing regarding the budget on November 27th at 7 o'clock here at the Village Hall. I know that even though there's about 700 or so line items in the budget, people have a tendency to look at one line item summary, which is the levy. And on the board, we have something which we were discussing in finance. The levy in total for 2008 is projected to go up by 98,258. Now, if this was the federal budget, we'd probably all be very happy if that was the number for the village. I'm not sure where that number is, but it's not too bad. You can say, "Why is it going up at all?" The answer is primarily for two reasons. 52,409 is for the project cost associated with the Village Hall and the projected mortgage on that. That's about 4.4 percent. General operating issues, increase of 45,000 over the previous year, 45,849. If you add those two numbers up, become 98,258. Add this up as a whole, it's 8.3. If you were to take this 98,258 divided by the approximate number of properties we have here, which is 1,260, this is the average property tax would increase by, it's a little bit less than $78 per year for property owners. Obviously, some will be more, some will be less. That's about $6.50 a month. As one point of reference in terms of looking at the budget. I know it doesn't deal with mill rates and it doesn't deal with equalized value and some people like to deal with that. I have a tendency to look at things as simplistically as I can. And that's about as simple a way as I can do it. So that's what's in the budget along with everything else. And that's all we have from the Finance Committee. Yes?
Item C.
Pardon?
Item C.
Item C, well, let's skip. Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. The Hudson Area Joint Library Funding. We have received from the President of the Hudson Area Joint Library the projected cost and our share of that for the library of 2008. And the library, the North Hudson portion of the library cost is actually down for 2008 versus 2007. It's down by approximately $800. So the Finance Committee is recommending approval of the North Hudson portion of the Hudson Area Library 2008 budget in an amount of 70,026, which is also in our 2008 budget, per the attached funding documented, documents submitted by the President of the Hudson Area Library Board. So that is my motion on that subject. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Comments, questions, discussion? Alright, seeing done, we'll vote with a roll call vote. Start over here, Joe?
Yes.
Colleen? Sandra?
Yes.
Yes.
George? Larry, yes, okay? I didn't give you the catch, George, I'm always trying to get through meetings as quickly as I can, but I try not to skip items. Okay, Public Works?
Okay, we've got, just trying to make sure I'm going through the right meeting minutes here. Do you have a second here? I'm not seeing it for some reason. I'm just looking for my meeting minutes for Public Works. Here we are. There's three things that I wanted to talk about tonight. And one was an item that the board gave the Public Works to look into during the last meeting. It has to do with the, the old maintenance building site across the street. And we looked at, we talked about that at our, at our meeting. However, we didn't come up with a plan. And the reason is, is because we have kind of, we don't have enough information. I think logic would dictate that, that property over there would be used for one of three things. It could be used for parking. It could be used for a park and put, you know, some of the gym sets that we had over here, over there. Or it could be just planted into grass, or maybe a fourth alternative would be a combination of those three. But one of the things that we don't know is how many parking places that we want to include, you know, off-street parking for the Village Hall. And we didn't have that information, and so we couldn't have too much of a dialogue about it. I don't know what group is responsible for that, or how we get to that first set of data, but I think we need that before we go any further. And so we took no action other than to bring it back to the board and say, "These are our options, you know, what would you expect us to do?" And so, you know, I don't know if we can open that up for a discussion at this time, but we had no recommendation to do anything, even temporarily across the street. I know that we've had some complaints about some dust and some dirt and that sort of thing, but a lot of that is associated with the building project. As soon as the building is done, the trucks are gone, we'll see a lot less of that and our neighbors will as well, but.
What I'm going to suggest is since on the agenda, we're showing chair update, which is where it would be appropriate to be talking about things at the committee.
So we can't talk about it?
Yeah, I was just assumed not getting into a detailed discussion, for sure not decision-making on a topic that wasn't on the agenda, because that would preclude people who had, who might have some comments on that.
And we have time, we obviously have time with this project.
Yeah, okay.
Maybe we could put it on the meeting, or on the agenda for next board meeting and come to some resolution about that.
Okay.
Okay. Second thing that we need to talk about is the salt storage handling agreement between North Hudson and the City of Hudson. I think in your documents, there is a letter of understanding that the City of Hudson has signed and we need to have the village also approve this and sign it. And so I would make the motion, and by the way, that, as you know, last year, just a brief history, the Village of North Hudson went to 100% salt mixture, which was a change from a sand and salt mixture that we'd been doing previous years. We'd been loading up our, our trucks with the City of Hudson's salt equipment and storage facility, which is on the other side of Lake Malibu here. And it's worked out very well for us. We don't have to store anything on-site, we don't have to have a salt storage building, which is very expensive. And I think we've saved, I'm not sure what we've saved, but I think we projected to save around $6,000 last year in budget expensing for, budget expenses for snow plowing. And that was because of the reduced amount of salt that we used, as well as during the spring of the year, we, we have less sweeping that we need to do. And then we don't have to haul away that sand as a hazardous waste. So it's much cheaper for us to do this, it's working out well. We would like us, we would like the board to, and I will make the motion that the board approve the September 17th, 2007, letter of understanding between the City of Hudson, the Village of North Hudson concerning salt storage handling, period. If there's a second, then we can discuss. That was a motion, yeah. And Mark, I don't know if you have anything to add to that? I think it's pretty self-explanatory, we need to do this and.
Joe, what's the difference in the rate from 2007?
There's some increase in rate and I don't have the details in front of me, but it isn't, it isn't an amount a whole lot. I know Mark had.
It says a 5% increase?
Yeah, but I don't know if that's an overall 5% increase. Is that a 5% increase in their billing and, and use of their equipment?
Basically, it's the 5% from what they have used of the equipment for storing the materials and stuff like that.
So our total cost of using salt is necessarily going to go up by 5%?
The 6.60 per ton is really combined, that's what they charge us to store and load it. We order and we pay for that separately. And then there's, when they send us the bill, that's $13.26 per bill. That's really an administrative fee. Last year, we got two of them. That's a fairly nominal amount. And the per ton for storage and for loading, it's certainly reasonable. In total, this approach to taking care of the roads has certainly proved to be a lot more economical. So we have a motion and a second to approve the salt storage handling agreement with the City of Hudson. Any other questions on it? An agreement, so we probably should do a roll call on this. Start over here, Sandra?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Colleen?
Yes.
Larry, yes.
Okay, the next and last item that we have in Public Works to talk about is potential equipment purchase. And I think we may have talked about, I know we've talked about it during the budget process. We may have talked about it at the last board meeting during our, the chair update. But we have a skid steer. It's basically, for those of you who don't know what that is, it's, it's kind of a bobcat, bigger bobcat, four-wheel bucket on the front that we use a lot in both the spring and summer and winter. And, and ours is about 10 years old. It's been used a lot for handing a lot of salt. And what that means is, is it has been getting rusty. But beyond that, we've had some problems with the hydraulics. We've just recently put, I think, over a thousand, close to $2,000 into new hydraulic hoses and we're finding out that they're still leaking. And we have a hydraulic pump that is, needs to be replaced. You know, other than that, the, the equipment is, is not of that bad shape. But we also have an opportunity. And I think we spent about $24,000 for that skid loader, skid steer, 10 years ago. And Value Equipment in Baldwin has given us a quote, and this is rather unusual and it's almost too good to be true, but essentially it is this. They have a skid loader, a new model that they would be willing to sell us for $38,000. They're willing to take our, our skid steer in for trade at a value of $22,500. And I think that leaves a balance of around 15.5, but I think they're also going to add about $1,000 for air conditioning or something like that because the new one has windows. So they're looking, we're looking for about some capital money of around $16,500 to trade up. The benefit of doing that is this, is after one full year of using that piece of equipment, they will take that in trade and give us a brand-new one for a small fee. And the fee is calculated at $2 per hour times the number of hours that is on the skid steer that we have. We estimate that we would put on 150 hours a year, no more than 200 hours a year. At $2, $2 an hour, we essentially get a new skid steer every year for about 400 bucks. And that would, you would, you would have to think that during that year, you, you wouldn't be doing much, if any, maintenance to it. So that is really the recommendation. You know, we're going to spend, I think we have a code in here of, isn't it roughly $5,000 or $4,000, $3,900 to replace the hydraulic pump on it. So we're going to be needing to do that soon, if not, you know, the start of next year. But this just makes more sense for us to do, both short-term and long-term. And as I understand it, other municipalities are doing this around, around the area. And, and so, Mark, do you have anything else to add to that? I tried to summarize what you've given me and what we talked about.
No, basically, you've covered it pretty much the way it was presented by yourself. If we do not do this issue, we'll spend about $5,500 worth of repairs needed before this upcoming winter, so.
Does the windows on the vehicle, you know, it's got glass on to protect the op-.
Yeah, basically, our old.
Do they move it up, move up?
The windows.
They open?
You can actually talk, yeah. You can actually slide the windows open, but what it's for is when, if you're in a real dusty environment and everything else, or a hot day when you're in the machine with the sun blaring, the safety front door, now like our, our currents gets here, you can remove all the glass from it. But with the new skid steers, because of safety reasons, especially when you're loading material and stuff, as you're lifting the front bucket, stuff does dump into cab. This now has a safety glass structured door to keep that from happening. So that's why they recommend, you know, installing the air into them.
But, yeah, do the side windows open?
Side windows do open, but if you're in a dusty situation.
Okay, I think that, I don't know, it seemed to me that was Larry's question, but.
October 31st, this indicates that this bid was presented October 18th and expires October 31st. Do you have any comments regarding that?
I've talked to them, even the date that this bid was in, they will extend it till the end of the year if necessary.
This seems like an exceptional deal. $38,000 to buy a new one. Thirty-eight thousand to buy a new one, they're going to give us twenty-two-five for a unit, and we know we need five thousand dollars worth of work. That leaves us with a net of, uh, it's actually thirty-nine thousand. It's actually thirty-nine thousand minus twenty-two-five, which then leaves us with a net of sixteen-five. We've already got within the two thousand and seven budget, thirty-five hundred dollars, which is then allocated for skid steer. Which we could apply against this so that our net, if you want, if you want to buy it tomorrow morning, would be thirteen thousand dollars. And next year's, I understand, if you use it for, say, roughly two hundred dollars, we'll pay two dollars an hour times two hundred.
Correct.
So we'll pay four hundred bucks to use it next year. We'll turn it back and we get a new one.
Yes.
Following year, we do the same thing?
What we do is we load the, uh, we load the machine, read the hour meter, come in here, have, uh, the general government cut a check for, let's say there's two hundred hours on it, four hundred bucks. We take the check for four hundred dollars, we guide the machine down there. They got more of that machine, load a brand-new machine on it, and we do.
There's no question this would be...
Yeah, my guess is, the way this document reads, is it looks like it's good for one year.
Yes, one year.
And so each year that we do that would be renewed for another year. So businesses being businesses, you don't know how long they're going to be doing this kind of a program. But it looks like it would certainly be done for one year and, uh...
Well, even looking at the cost, even if we were just to set, the old one isn't worth fixing. Let's just go buy a new one.
Yeah.
A net cost of thirteen dollars to buy a new skid steer is a heck of a price.
Yeah.
To begin with. Then next year, we use it for a year. Now, how, and we pay two dollars an hour basically for running it. How, how, how firm are you on the hundred and fifty dolla- or hundred and fifty hours per year that we use it?
Well, right now, uh, going into, when we added last owner to maintain, we had a, uh, sixteen sixty-one on it, as far as hours on the machine. You take that, divide it by ten years roughly, and it's, it's up to about a hundred and sixty hours. So, even if you, it's pretty close.
We might be using it for more hours because it'll be available more frequently.
No, that'll last... We've had, we've had, well, the nice thing about us with Value, what they've done, is anytime we have a machine down there being worked on, they'll let us bring back another machine to use while they're working on ours. They just read the hour and we bang her back, you know? It's like, okay, use this many hours and... But, uh, now, they've been very good for the village to work with, as long as I've been working with them. They're, you know, same thing with our...
You said this is a program, this is a program they only make available to municipalities?
Yes, this is only, program is only available for municipalities.
Well, certainly from a...
It was basically, we inserted this program roughly about three years ago. And this is, this is not a program through New Holland. This is actually a program through Value.
Do we, I know this is a silly question, but since the expectation is we, I'm assuming we own the vehicle?
Yes.
Okay, and then we pay a fee?
At any time we decide to opt out of it, we just don't want to turn the machine, you know?
If what?
If we decide to opt out of the trade-in thing, we just, for some reason, decide, oh, we're not going to turn that machine in. It's good, we're just going to keep it. Well, then basically, we're out of the program. We have a brand-new machine.
And it's ours.
And it's ours.
Or it stays in the program.
Yes, or we stay in the program, where we always guarantee a warranty, and everybody else, because you always got a brand-new machine.
So we own whatever we have at the time.
Well, I mean, this is, would be very, very foolish not to, uh, apply into this program. And we think about buying appliances even on our own. We are always presented with the opportunity to buy a warranty, extended guaran- extended warranty, or a service contract, which even on simple appliances for the home can run you easily three, four hundred dollars a year. And, uh, now, Joe, did you make a motion?
I believe I did. May, no, maybe I did not.
No, there was no motion on the floor yet.
I didn't. I didn't, but I can.
Would you?
Uh, I move that, uh, the board approve the purchase of a new skid loader from Value equi- Value Implement at Baldwin for the sum of sixteen thousand five hundred dollars.
Second. Joe, did you want to include that maintenance, or the, uh, re- rebate program, or whatever you wanted to call it?
Well, I guess we could...
Is that applied in this?
We could, uh, we could basically include in the motion the quote, um, it's dated October eighteenth, two thousand and seven. And that includes the, that trade-in under special instructions.
I'm assuming the assumption was that this would be paid out of the undes- undes- undesigned needed general fund?
I didn't.
Dollars would be used?
I just wanted you guys to come up with the money somehow. We had the past I had, you know? That's a, that's another discussion, I, I guess, but, uh, we could do it out of, doesn't matter. Or we could get a loan.
For that dollar amount, I would not want to see us getting a loan. I mean, it certainly is a capital item, but just by definition. But in terms of paying for it, I'd rather see us just pay cash and be done with it.
I think I seconded that. Yeah. Two, uh, two points on this issue is, first of all, the trade-in that they're giving us is fantastic. If you break it down, over sixteen hundred hours, they're giving us twenty-two thousand plus. That breaks down to about a dollar and a quarter an hour for the use of we, of it over the last ten years, which is fantastic. The only question I have is, does this come with two buckets or anything? One for snow and one for gravel or dirt? Or do we use our existing buckets? Or how do they set this thing up?
Uh, well, this comes us with this, the standard bucket. And then also, and that's basically the same thing we have on our, our unit we have now. Uh, the only thing we will add to it, that we had to add to the other ones, we actually add a cutting edge to it, just to make sure you reinforce the edge of the bucket. And that's something that we, we will take care of out of our maintenance.
And that's sufficient for all the uses in North Hudson?
So you're not going to come back to us in a couple of months and ask for another bucket?
No.
Or forks or...
And everything else, this also, this also...
That's a good point. It's a good point.
And that is, basically, this unit is the comparable unit to, even though it has a different number on it. It's now one eighty instead of the XL eight eighty-five. It is the comparable machine. It is the same machine. Everything we have now, our broom, our forks, everything else, will fit on this machine.
That's a good point, yeah. This isn't the start of a extended option list that we must have.
There aren't going to be any.
There are, there aren't going to be any.
We went down this road once.
Did we?
Mm-hmm.
With us?
Huh?
Public Works. Public Works.
Yeah, it's the whole idea, you buy something, and then you find out you got to buy three accessories, and they cost a hundred grand. I just want to make sure that this is it.
Yeah.
That, and Mark is telling me this is it. I kind of con- concur with George and Jim's assessment, which is, seems like an, an opportunity that we would be foolish to pass up on. As a municipality, particularly looking forward from a budget perspective, because we're always either budgeting maintenance repairs or something for the skid steer. This takes all of that out of the budget going prospectively. It also maximizes your uptime on a piece of equipment, so...
No doubt, we'll make our department at least a little bit more productive.
Okay.
I think it's a necessary piece of equipment to have in the village, so I would say no reason not to move forward on it.
Okay. Well, and our net cost is only going to be thirteen thousand. I want to make sure that we understand that. Okay?
So were we responsible repair and maintenance then in the meantime? I'm assuming we're responsible for all repair and maintenance in the meantime?
Basically, any, she is, she will be under warranty. So anything mechanical like that under warranty will be covered if there's anything that comes out. Normally, like, we break a window or something like that on it, then yes, it could be horribly blown, a tire, something like that, yes. That stuff will be at village cost, but she will be warranted, so any mechanical problems, hydraulics.
Mark, is this anticipating or assuming that we can trade in our current loader as-is with the bad hydraulic pump?
Yes, they've already looked at it. They basically, even before I did the fifteen hundred dollar patch that didn't work on the hydraulics, uh, they already at that time were willing to take our machine at the price they quoted us.
Okay. We need to get it over there really quick.
Yeah. Can you just read back the motion?
Um, move that the board approve the purchase of a new skid loader from Value Implants in the sum of sixteen thousand five hundred, um, semicolon, quote dated of October eighteenth, two thousand and seven, under special instructions.
Uh, forget about special instructions. You don't need that.
I was just making sure that the motion made reference back to this document?
Yes.
So someone can understand how we got to that number?
Yeah.
Assuming that this is approved tonight, uh, when do we, uh, when do we see this new machine here? When will you be able to take possession?
Currently sitting on a lot of Value Implement right now. With myself and, uh, Mark Olstead. Well, Mark, originally, we got a, we originally got approached on this last year, last fall. They originally brought this up that this was going around. At that time, we kind of looked at it like, oh, it's too good to be true. And we ended up on our repairs, that's when their guys came back. Our service department actually brought it up to Mark Olstead, who brought the machine down there and said, hey, this, this municipal deal is still there, and it's going to be there for years, and we'd like to get you guys involved in it. That's when I went down, looked at the machine, and actually sat down and talked with the salesman on this thing. And that's when we came up with this quote.
Correct. Okay. Capital item of office, you're expanding items, so we'll do a roll call vote. Start over here, Joe?
Yes.
Colleen?
Yes.
Sandra?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Larry? Yes. Okay.
That's all I have.
Okay. Public Safety?
As you noticed in the, uh, minutes from the Public Safety Committee meeting of October eleventh, uh, you see there are a couple of items in there that I'd just like to bring your attention to that the department is dealing with. And one of them is that the, uh, squad car bid was rescinded. And I wonder, Bill, did you have a chance to, uh, I think Mark did contact you? And can she rescind that, uh, bid?
Yeah.
Okay. So we will be advertising for that, uh, squad car once again. Um, bomb squad, uh, this is, uh, an interesting development here. And that is that the, uh, Mark received notification in early September that the previously stationed U.S. Army Bombs Disposal Unit at Fort McCoy has been reassigned and will not, no longer be available to respond to incidents in Wisconsin. Well, that may not seem like a big deal, but the next, uh, but the issue is, as we read a little bit further, the closest bomb squads are located in Marathon County and Dane County, which are both over four hours away. And we currently do not have access to the Minnesota bomb squads. There's work being done to develop an interstate agreement with those agencies. Now, it'd be very easy for us to say, well, we don't have a problem here. But you may recall that we did have a problem here, where someone did believe that there was a bomb in a tree. And, uh, it, it was the Fort McCoy unit that did respond to the village and to our request to have it investigated. So just bringing that to your attention. Um, also in a, in the report of those minutes, you'll see there's a, we're working on the village department head, department head complaint policy, and it's mostly for the police department. Someone has a complaint that they would like to register with the, uh, it could be any of the officers, or it could be the chief himself. We're working on a, uh, procedure that will address, uh, that situation. Uh, the other thing we did talk about was a residency requirement policy for officers. And, uh, we think that that is still an important piece in our police department because we want officers to be able to respond quickly in an emergency situation. That's all I have for the PD.
Okay. Public Welfare?
Uh, yeah, I had another item on there too, and that was Village Hall addition and remodel update. Uh, the Building Management Committee does not meet every Thursday anymore. Uh, we meet pretty much on an as-need basis, and it's usually on a Thursday. I also attend the progress meetings that are conducted by, uh, Mike from Derrick Construction. And, uh, I could read the most recent report, but it's already outdated. The meeting, when you think about it, it was last, it was a week ago. Since that time, there have been a number of things which have been completed. And if you take a look around the building, you'll see all the, most of the windows are in. Door frames are all in. The doors aren't in yet, but the frames are there. Uh, as recent as, from about three to four o'clock today, we met with a gentleman who is assisting us with the telephone system. And, uh, Jim had called that meeting, and we had Gloria and the chief and, uh, Mark, and not myself. And that was a very productive meeting, I believe, Jim. I thought so. I'd like to, uh, throw out a commendation to, uh, Mike, the superintendent. His name is Mike Mikla from Derrick Construction. Uh, and I'd just like to comment on his conscientiousness. Uh, Saturday morning, uh, my wife and I went for a walk around the village and brought her around here to take a look. And there was Mike working Saturday morning. I didn't have a chance to talk to him. Um, but then later on, I was walking around with my son and his, his little dog. We were out for a walk. And I said, hey, let me show you the, the Village Hall and the progress. And there's Mike, he's still working. So I said, we got to go in and see, Mike, what are you doing? And there was Mike with a, um, with a saw, a special power saw for cutting these concrete blocks. And, uh, I said, what are you doing? It's Saturday, you're not supposed to be here. He says, no, he says, I got to do this because it's noisy, it's dusty. I want this piece of the job finished before the staff comes back to work on Monday morning. I don't want them to have to listen to this, because it was right outside this door. And I thought, that's, I appreciate that. That's, uh, that's a nice job, Mike. You went above and beyond.
It is. I'm glad you brought that up. That's good to know.
So that's, that's where we are right now. If you have any specific questions, I could probably answer them. Hmm? I will, Joe.
Anything else?
That's it.
Okay. Now we'll move on to public welfare.
Uh, public welfare, we are, uh, in the middle of a successful fall leaf pickup. Uh, I'm sure that we'll hear some issues that will arise from that over the next few days. We'll deal with them as need be. Uh, other than that, it's been a relatively, uh, quiet month for welfare, and, uh, everything is moving along great.
So leaves are being put out Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday this week?
Yes, so, uh...
Just bag them up, put them on the...
They're, they had to have been out on Monday morning. So, uh, it, if they weren't out, uh, and your scheduled area was to have been picked up Monday, by putting them out tomorrow, they'll sit there until spring, so...
Oh, okay. But I won't do that.
Absolutely. Yeah. And that is, uh, pretty much everything. Oh, one, one thing that I would like to put on a future agenda that we'll talk about, and I've been doing a little bit of work on this on my own, but it's, um, in regards to this, um, public, uh, phone, uh, voice messaging system that is out there. And I've been working with somebody, and I'm finding out that the cost of this is virtually free, that we can, um, contact seventy percent of the village residents uh, for a cost of less than thirty-five dollars per bulk voice messaging. So like, situations like this where, where you, uh, have, you know, fall leaf pickup brochures posted and, and articles in the newspaper, um, it's a wonderful way of, of letting them know. But I think this would be nice to have a computerized voice message to say, fall leaf pickup is going to be on such and such a date. The downside of it is, people will use it a lot more, and it'll probably double our cost of leaf pickups. So it's a double-edged sword. But, um, I think, uh, on behalf of the, the residents, I think it would be worth looking into. And I'll, I'll have a little more information as we go forward, so, um, I'll, I'll let you know after the next welfare meeting.
That's good information.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Park Board?
Not too much for much us either. I'm still working on the park plan, um, especially with the ridges park. Um, Jerry Ripley from J O Consulting came to our last meeting regarding the grading, um, how much of the grassland and, um, asphalt for park, or for the playground. And he's going to do a little bit more work and come back with, um, some more ideas that are...
How did you happen to come in contact with that consultant?
He called me and said that he was supposed to come because Derrick told him to or something like that.
Oh, I see, okay, he's associated with Derrick, so, okay. I got you.
Yeah, so I said, fine, come.
Okay. I got you.
So other than that, we're still just, you know, working on the plan and realizing that our money will run out since there's not a lot of development. So other than that, we're still just, you know, working on the plan and realizing that our money will run out since there's not a lot of development, developable land left, so...
Okay.
But we have enough for a little while.
All right, anything else?
No.
That's it, okay. Uh, I don't have a lot, I know Joe had raised the issue of the vacant lot, and I was just going to raise that in terms of, we're just asking everybody to think about, um, between now, you know, probably December. Although, I mean, there's, there's no real time, uh, time constraint on us, in terms of, you know, what, what is the best use for that little chunk of land across the street? Short-term, long-term, you know, should it be green, should it be black, you know, culled pavement? So that's the only thing I really had, and just ask people to start thinking about that, because we are, we do need to come to grips with that shortly after the building gets done, and we uh, I don't think we'll have to do anything until spring, other than maybe fix a panel or two that's, you know, should have been replaced, you know, some time ago, that, that acts as an obstruction to the, or a visual obstruction for the neighbors, and I don't want to take advantage of the neighbors just because they're good people, so... Okay? Larry, do you have any comments? Okay? Uh, if not, then, uh, shh, I will propose a motion to convene in the closed session pursuant to section nineteen point eight-five-one to consider employment and performance evaluations of employees and nineteen point eight-five-one E to consider collective bargaining agreement in North Hudson Professional Police Association. Uh, okay, and I believe this requires a roll call vote, so we'll s- start over here. Just a second, my pen is not writing, okay? Sandra?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Joe?
Colleen? Yes.
Okay. Good. We'll take a two-minute break?
You told Eric, Kevin.